Alright, alright. Hello, good evening everybody.
Yeah, I'm really like...
Hello. Alright, so everybody, we're gonna get the meeting started, so call the meeting in order at 6:01. Alicia, can you do, or let's do pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, in the name of our beloved and precious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody hear me okay? I know.
You have to like...
Okay. I got it. Alright, Alicia, can you do roll call, please?
Steve Dageloff.
Here.
Ian McDonald.
Here.
Lori Valargen.
Here.
Lucy Astor. Bruce Valargen.
Here.
Danny Erickson.
Here.
Matt Kukal.
Here.
Alright, so together we educate, engage, and empower all learners bridging their passions and pathways to create a successful future and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Next item is, is there approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda. The motion would be to reschedule the matter that's in closed session to the next working session to include the two outstanding complaints.
Is there a second? Okay, no second, is there any other motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, our next item will be public comment. I'm just gonna read something quickly, we have a lot of, actually, we need to, I guess, make a motion to approve, we have fourteen public comments, so is there a motion to extend the public comment session over the twenty minute, twenty minute timeframe?
I'd make a motion to extend the public comment past twenty minute timeframe.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, okay, so I'm just gonna read something quickly before we start with the public comment, just so everyone's clear on how and what we should say and can't say, and how we should do this. So, "The purpose of public comment is to give the community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the school board about issues that fall within the board's, the school board's authority. Speakers who signed up are permitted to speak for up to three minutes. As a reminder, speakers may not engage in the following conduct and may be ruled out of order and be prohibited from making future public comments if they violate these rules. Speakers may not make allegations, charges, or complaints against any specific or identifiable student or employee. If the person wishes to make an allegation or to file a charge or complaint against a student or employee, the person should make the allegation, charge, or complaint to the superintendent in writing, or in a private meeting, or to the individual designated in District 11 to receive the allegation, charge, or complaint. Speakers may not make complaints or gestures that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, or abusive, and speakers may not make personal attacks against others, including but not limited to students, parents, community members, or employees. All comments need to be directed to the Board President." And we will get started, so Lori will be keeping time for the meeting tonight, so our first public comment will be, and then when you do come up to public comments, please state your name, your address, and what you'll be speaking about tonight. First comment is Stacy Bilil. Oh, yeah, yeah, and then when everybody do speaking, Lori will let you know, raise your hand, or if you don't see her, let you know, there's fifteen seconds, so.
My reader's on the wall, I can't see. My name is Stacy Bilil, my address is 760 150th Avenue, Richmond, Wisconsin. I teach 7th and 8th grade social studies and ELA here at Somerset Middle School. First, I want to tell you that my son attended Somerset Schools from 4K through 12th grade and graduated last year. I don't have words for how grateful I am for every single person who had parts in helping me raise him into the person that he is today. He received an excellent, challenging, and rigorous education from highly skilled teachers and administrators who not only cared about his academics, but who cared about him as a person. They attended his events, I still remember him going over to Dr. Donnelly and jumping up on the glass when he made a goal in hockey. They held him accountable when he made a mistake, they cheered him on every step of the way, and he is lucky to be a graduate of Somerset High School. I look at the middle school and I want to let you know that we are not teaching subpar academics. We are very good at our jobs. Everyone I work with gives it their all every single day to help our kids learn, succeed, feel safe at school, and be good people. I'll let you in on a secret, too, our kids do like coming to school. I came tonight to share some things that are happening at our middle school building every day. Brandon Catlick is an absolute master of the regal. He has twenty-nine seventh graders packed into his ELA classroom, and when he is reading their class novel to them, every single kid is following along and listening. Sometimes I stop outside the door to listen because it is a true work of art. Dawn Peer, Jeff Johnson, and Dawn's student teacher are running a middle school BFF for our kids Monday through Thursday morning. They don't get paid for this, they're volunteering their time early in the morning to work with our middle school kids to develop healthy habits and learn training techniques that will carry through to high school. Deb Cardell, 6th grade math teacher extraordinaire, will help any kid at any time with math. She will help them on their lunch break, during foundations or target time, even if they are not her math kids. Last year, my seventh graders routinely would go next door to help her, to get help, and they were always welcomed not only to get help, but to stay and work in her room if they chose to. As the kids and I were debriefing after Alice training last week, they shared that they were worried that my room didn't have a window punch. I passed their concerns on to Joe Hutter, and he came down to my room not an hour later with a solution to the problem, and I had a window punch in my room before the end of the day. I don't have enough time to talk about all of the ways that Joe has been a great leader this year, and it's only October. If there is any board member who can't think of a celebration to share about what the kids or the staff on this campus are doing, perhaps they could actually start showing up to events on this school campus. It is always full of kids and grownups doing really great things. I will continue to be here at public comment to share the good things that are happening in this district as there are too many to share in three minutes, so I will see you all in two weeks.
Becky Olson, 941 90 Side Avenue, in Richmond, Wisconsin. I stand before the Board today as an extremely concerned mother, teacher, and community member to discuss the public comment portion of the Somerset School Board meetings, and to urge you to consider removing this portion from future agendas. Providing a platform for people to share unfiltered opinions about our staff members and most concerningly about our district's children is detrimental to our students, our teachers, and our schools, which are the heart of this community. Too often, these opinions are fueled by negativity, misinformation, and fear. I can assure you, as a mother of six children who have been a part of this district, and as a teacher who has been working in this district for the past eighteen years, that our staff gives one hundred percent to all children, fostering lasting relationships and preparing them for their futures. People have used the public comment portion of this meeting to publicly suggest that our staff isn't performing at their best, publicly calling out educators instead of directly reaching out to them to request accurate information about their concerns. This is wrong. Presently, many of our staff members feel they've lost the trust and respect of our community due to misinformation circulating about them. Staff are worried about being targeted online through Facebook groups and community pages, causing them anxiety and leading them to wonder if they can continue their teaching profession here at Somerset School District. This is wrong. It is deeply troubling to hear hurtful opinions presented by the public comment portion of the school board meetings, opinions of our students, children in this district, that they are presented as facts, such as the false claims that LGBTQ students are mentally ill, or that these students should conform to a narrow definition of identity based on their own biological traits. Following a past school board meeting and hearing such hate-filled opinions and the applause that followed, I found myself sobbing in my car, shocked by the hatred directed at some, by some of the adults at the children in our school district, who simply want to be accepted for who they are. This is wrong. You should know that I strive to create a safe place for all students within my classroom, where diversity is celebrated and every child is respected as a human being. I do this both from a personal moral stance and a legal obligation to ensure equity for all students who walk through our doors.
Ten seconds.
Somerset School Board members, you can't stop social media or the hate-filled opinions that some people choose to share loudly on their own time, but you can protect our educators, our schools, and most importantly, our children.
Alright.
I'd like to end with a quote from Maya Angelou, "Do the best you can until you know better, and then when you know better, do better." Somerset, we know better, now let's do better.
Thanks, Dennis.
Hi, everybody, my name is Dennis Potter, and I've been here a long time. When I first started here, we had AP bio, Mr. Shephell, that's it. There was a conscious decision made by administrators to make Somerset High School more academically rigorous, and so I want to extend gratitude to those administrators that made that decision and the administrators that are continuing to support academic rigor at the high school, especially Dr. Donnelly, and especially Mr. Probst. I feel nothing but one hundred percent support from our administration for the academically rigorous classes that are offered at Somerset High School. I want to extend gratitude to the teachers who teach those classes, members of the community. We have college-in-the-schools classes that this school offers, nobody in the state of Wisconsin can match us. I'm not just saying like a hyperbole statement here, nobody can match the CIS classes that we offer with the University of Minnesota, nobody. And then, we offer AP courses, college-in-the-schools, and we offer classes with Northwoods, and we offer dual enrollment, and then Mr. Olson offers something, that's the one right there. And so I extend gratitude, sincere gratitude, to those teachers who teach those difficult classes. I extend gratitude to the teachers who create students who are able to handle the rigor and are intellectually curious, and I'm talking kindergarten through about sophomore year. So, thank you to the elementary teachers and the middle school teachers and the high school teachers who create kids that can handle those difficult classes and are intellectually curious enough to want to take those classes. So, thank you, elementary, middle school, and high school teachers, way to go. I want to thank the taxpayers. Educating the staff who have to go to the University of Minnesota to get qualified costs money. It costs money for me to go to the U of M to be trained. I can't just go to Mr. Probst and say, hey, I want to take AP classes, I want to teach them next year. That takes training, and it takes continual training. I have to go over the summer, my fellow CIS teachers have to go to the University of Minnesota during the summer and be trained during the summer and during the school year. Thank you taxpayers of Somerset for supporting an academically rigorous institution. And finally, I want to thank the students. It's a risk to take those courses. The risk is, those classes are hard, and I might not get the grade that I'm normally getting because I'm taking a more rigorous class, and it's an intellectually curious student who's been urged on by his elementary, middle school, and high school teachers to push yourself and see what you can accomplish, so thank you to those students. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a diamond in the rough. I just wish we just advertised it!
Cody Wallen, you're up next.
Thanks, Dennis. Eric Pulcell, 1519 Freer Street, Hudson, Wisconsin. To the Board, our administration, and community, I would like to thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. I have worked as a teacher in the Somerset School District for eleven years. I would like to begin tonight with something that I have not seen enough of during the public forums over the past two years. I would like to begin with a moment of positivity. Each day, I arrive at Somerset High School and Middle School, where I have the opportunity to teach some of the most incredible young minds you could ever imagine, while working alongside some of the most passionate and devoted educators that I have ever encountered in my career. The teachers in Somerset display a level of care and compassion alongside high expectations for learning, behavior, and community. Our students are intelligent, resilient, and they genuinely give me the hope for the future of our nation. In contrast to these people that I am lucky enough to spend my days with, I find myself continually discouraged, dispirited, and downhearted when I tune into the live stream of our school board meetings. The passion and dedication that our teachers have not just for our students, but also for our community is buried underneath the mountain of national rhetoric and insistent talking points pulled from Fox News, Newsmax, and a slew of other right blogs and podcasts. The accomplishments of our students and the dedication of our teachers are completely overshadowed by right-wing propaganda and people looking to create dissension within our community. Instead of looking at what is actually happening in Somerset, we are met with a flurry of accusations meant to divide this community rather than unite it. We have a word for this behavior in the classroom, and that word is bullying. I never thought I would have to stand here and lecture adults in the same way I do as my middle schoolers, but I will say it now the same way I do to them. We do not have room in this community for bullies.
Cody Wallen, 511 260th Avenue, Somerset, Wisconsin. I'm a social studies teacher at Somerset High School. I was born and raised in Somerset, graduated in 2012, and returned in 2018, excited to have the opportunity to teach in my hometown. I have taught numerous social studies courses at SHS, having spent the last five years specifically focused on teaching civics and AP, United States Government and Politics. In my courses, the first concept we talk about is civility. Civility is the ability to disagree without disrespect. Civility is the practice of formal politeness and considerate behavior in both public and private interactions, allowing for productive communication, compromise, and consensus, and fostering a positive community atmosphere. It involves adhering to societal norms of decency and kindness, even in disagreement. I stand before you tonight not only as a civics and government teacher, but as someone who teaches kids, and deeply believes in the values that we are tasked with imparting to them. As educators, parents, and community leaders, we all share the responsibility to model the behavior we wish to see in our young people, especially in the areas of civility, respect, and constructive dialogue. Lately, I've observed behaviors during these meetings that I believe do not reflect the standards of civility that we should be setting for our students. Disagreements and debate are healthy in any democracy, but when they devolve into disrespect, personal attacks, or an unwillingness to listen, we not only harm the immediate discussions, we also send the wrong message to the young people watching. Our students are learning more from our actions than our words. When they see adults dismiss one another or engage in hostile behavior, it tells them that this is how disagreements are resolved, with contempt rather than conversation and division rather than understanding. This is a critical moment for them. In our classrooms, we teach about the importance of respect for disparate opinions and the role of civil discourse in a functioning democracy. That teaching is undermined when our students witness the very opposite of these values in the spaces where decisions about their education and future are made. I will end with this. Please remember that you are not just making decisions for the school district, you are helping shape the next generation of citizens. If you want them to lead with integrity, empathy, and respect, you must first embody those values yourself. Thank you.
Sarah Eichden, you're next.
I'm Nancy Anderson, my address is 1539 Hillside Court, in Richmond, Wisconsin. This is my thirty-first year teaching at Somerset Elementary. I would like to acknowledge that it is School Board Appreciation Week, so I appreciate all of you who continue to work together day in, day out to be a champion for our district. I appreciate your time spent on board business, knowing how much time and energy it also takes away from your own family. Just like our staff, you each bring your own individual abilities, work together to be successful, and continue to be a lifelong learner to contribute to our success of our school district. I may not always be present at each board meeting, but I sure do watch them from start to finish. I don't quite know how to sum up my thoughts and feelings, but it has been a true challenge to watch some of these meetings in recent months. This is not because I expect all of you to agree with each other, but the lack of respect is not only shocking, but saddening to me as a parent, as a teacher, as a human. We are teachers in a public school system. The best part of our job is that we get to meet, teach, and support all students. We work together with all students, all parents or guardians and grandparents. The "all are welcome" sign hanging in our windows truly means all are welcome, not only in our classrooms, but in our district. Each individual fingerprint shows that they have a safe place in our classrooms. I can't believe that I feel like I have to stand up here tonight to defend myself or my job as an educator at Somerset. It is exhausting to hear derogatory comments at the board meetings about our leadership, our staff, our district, and more recently, about our own students. We, as a staff, not only show up daily to support our students, but we support our colleagues, our district families, our administrators, and we sure want to support our school board members. I have no hidden agenda as a Somerset Elementary teacher. I also do not come to work just to teach arithmetic and reading. You see, to teach, I must get to know all twenty-five of my students and learn what they know, then figure out the best way I can help them grow, all twenty-five, every day. Last week during our Alice drills, I promised that I would do anything to protect their sweet faces. I love and am grateful that Officer Kerber is our full-time SRO, but if the time came, it would be us as staff making quick decisions to do what we can to save and protect all of them. I've heard many comments during the board meetings about the decreasing enrollment, the lack of transparency in our schools and our curriculum, and DEI. What makes me feel that this is so strange is because in thirty years, nobody, not one parent, has sat across from yet two conferences, emailed, or called, but they continue to bring these up at board meetings. I was taught to go to the source if there was a question or concern, and I would surely be willing to answer any of those for the parents that I serve.
Fifteen seconds.
I truly love coming to work, teaching our Spartans, getting to know all of our families and watching them grow. The following quote by Greta Thunberg hangs in my classroom, "You are number too small to make a difference." We are all Spartans, let's work together to be champions for our school district.
Sarah Colling, you're up next.
Alright, Sarah Eichden, 2184 59th Street, in the town of Somerset. Tonight, I am speaking for myself and on behalf of my husband Zach, who had a work commitment and could not attend. I speak to you tonight as a lifelong resident and proud 1995 graduate of Somerset High School, a current staff member, and a parent of two children who currently attend, and one who has graduated from Somerset High School. Our schools have been the hub of our community for decades, where people come together to celebrate, they come together to mourn, and they come together to work together to improve our schools, our community, and its members. The teachers here are supportive, amazing, and challenge our students to think critically and contribute to our world beyond our walls. Yesterday afternoon, I had the opportunity to take a couple of hours out of my Sunday to observe many of our high school students decorate the halls of SHS for our homecoming week. Together, they shared supplies, asked each other questions, and treated each other with kindness and respect regardless of their differing grade levels. Our teenage Spartans understand how to create a positive environment for each other despite their differences, and we saw that occurring out on the football field last night as our girls battled each other in those powder puff games. It seems that our school board could learn a lesson from these young adults. The hate, disrespect, and toxicity that has permeated the board meetings is embarrassing and an awful example for our young people. Last year, I was so proud that my daughter, who is in her ninth year of student council, was chosen as a school board representative. While she was nervous, she bravely reported on the awesome things happening across our district, and each month gained more confidence in her public speaking skills. Unfortunately, her father and I will not allow her to participate in school board meetings this year until they become more productive, less attacking, and filled with fewer half-truths. No children deserve to hear public comments that attack their classmates, their teachers, and the school district that they are proud to be a member of, under the guise of trying to make Somerset better. If you truly want to make Somerset better, attend a fine arts or sporting event to see the outstanding things our students can do, and please do take note of the number of staff members in attendance taking time out of their lives to support our kids. Ask questions out of curiosity, and not in an attacking or gotcha manner, looking for something wrong. Work with our administration, teachers, and staff so that we continue to offer all of our students amazing opportunities to succeed and to be who they are. Each person in our school community is valuable and deserves to be treated with respect and dignity. Thank you.
Next is Kristen Plater.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Colling, and I live at 617 160th Avenue, Somerset, Wisconsin. I am a fifteen-year resident of Somerset and currently in my fourteenth year of employment with the school district. I am here tonight for a multitude of reasons as I cannot sit back and stay silent about the current state of our district any longer. I am sad, I am frustrated, I am confused about how we got to a point of so much division, hate, and separation in our district. I have silently sat back and watched both individuals and groups of individuals tear this district apart, preach hate and prejudice, target specific teachers, target students, and slowly but surely make Somerset District a unsafe place for both students and staff, and I have enough. This is not who we are, this is not what we are meant to be, and this is not the path we can continue to go down any longer. It has to stop. I want to start by taking a moment to publicly recognize and show my unwavering support for our district administrator Shannon Donnelly, as well as all of our dedicated building-level principals and other district administrators. The work they do day in and day out is the foundation on which our success as a school community is built, and I am thankful for each one of them, and they deserve better. One of the greatest strengths we have is a leadership team that embodies an open-door policy. Shannon and our building administrators make themselves accessible to everyone, students, teachers, and parents alike. This openness fosters a sense of community and encourages dialogue. It's the kind of transparency that ensures that we all feel heard, valued, and respected. But openness is only the beginning. What truly sets Shannon and our building administrators apart is their commitment to follow-through. When they say they are going to do something, they do it. This consistency builds the trust that is essential for our district to thrive, whether it's implementing a new initiative, addressing concerns, or ensuring student needs are met. We know that they have our backs and they will deliver on their promises. Leadership is not about making decisions, it's about earning trust, and Shannon and the entire leadership team have done just that. They've shown us time and time again that we can rely on them to guide us through challenges and celebrate our victories together. Trust is the bedrock of any strong community, and we are fortunate to have leaders we can trust so deeply. Beyond trust is follow-through. Shannon and our administrators lead with compassion, they understand that schools are more than just places for learning, they are places where lives are shaped and futures are built. Their compassionate leadership ensures that each of us feels supported, and more importantly, that our students feel safe, cared for, and motivated to succeed. It's their empathy and understanding that make all the difference. Ultimately, it is their leadership that unites us all. Shannon and our administrative team lead by example, showing us how to rise to any occasion, solve problems collaboratively, and always keep our students' best interests at heart. Their vision and commitment are what drive us forward, and I am proud to stand here today in full support of them. The idea that staff and students are afraid to talk to their building-level principals or Dr. Donnelly is simply false. or Dr. Donnelly is simply false. As a staff, we know they have our backs and we have theirs. The only fear that exists among our staff...
Yep. (applause) Debbie Johnson, you're next.
Kristen Plater, 746 Madison Avenue. I am a Somerset middle school teacher. I've been bethel lately by the negative comments imposed on our school. I've been working here for 15 years, and I've never seen as much negativity as I have in the past year. And it occurred to me that you, board members and community members, you don't get the opportunity to notice the amazing things our students and staff are doing every day. So here's a few things that I have noticed in the last two weeks. Today, I had to stop in the shop to talk to a student, and I got to watch Mr. Hank demonstrate how to safely use, I think it was called a chop saw. After his demo, all of the kids had to show him that they could safely use it too. A group of girls came running over to show me the pieces of wood they cut to tell me how excited and proud they were of what they accomplished that day. Later, I stopped in Mrs. Olson's room, and I got to watch her teach students about annotating text and making connections. All 25 kids in her room were 100% engaged and focused, and that doesn't happen without mastery of the art of teaching. It was amazing to witness. For the past week, we've been writing narratives in our ELA class, and there was a group of girls talking during their work time. So I went over there to get them to quiet down and see if they needed help, and I overheard their conversation. What were they talking about? Mrs. Prochak and how lucky they are and that she used to come back to be their volleyball coach. It was heartwarming to hear their kindness. One of our lessons last week in advisory was about the Spartan standard of showing others they matter. The next day, I asked my students to write a thank you note to an adult in the building who made them feel like they mattered. I passed out a note card to each kid, and several asked for extras because they couldn't pick just one adult. They spent the next 10 minutes silently writing in their very nearest printing because they wanted to show their appreciation for their teachers. The other day, we were finishing a close read on our curriculum study session, and close reads are notoriously difficult and time-consuming. At the end of the hour, a boy came up to me and said he couldn't wait for me to read what he wrote because it was the best thing he'd ever written and he was so proud of himself. Last week, when I was reminding kids that we could pass school last Monday for teacher in service, an eighth grader replied, "Oh man, I love this place." That's my grade 4 teenager. Overall, here's what I noticed. Our schools are filled with great kids. Sure, sometimes they drive us crazy, but there's not a single one whom I'm not glad to teach. Our students are taught by teachers who care about them and love them. Yes, we're human beings who sometimes make mistakes, but I absolutely trust and appreciate our teachers and support staff to do what is best for our students. Our teachers are led by administrators who are passionate about creating a positive learning environment. I feel their respect and support every day, and I appreciate it. It would be really easy to get caught up in the negativity that surrounds us, but this negativity isn't the reality. The reality is that I and the vast majority of our families trust and respect this school. When we have disagreements or conflicts, which we will, and we do have from time to time, we learn, make changes, and improve. At the end of the day, I'm proud of the work we do and the difference we make. It's a great day to be a Spartan.
Troy Link, you're next.
Patty Schachner, 1064 20th Avenue. I just wanted to say that, you know, the school district is really kind of on the premise of our third place. Our first place is always our home, our second place could be our place of worship, and our third place is the school. It's part of the hub of our community. And as the third place, I think a lot of us parents in our busy life and grandparents, we forget to give gratitude to the people who are in this third place, that guide all our children, that are there for them in sports, help them if they're having problems. And I'm probably part of that problem, I probably didn't say it enough. So I just want to say to all the teachers, staff, administrators, janitors, cooks, paraprofessionals, everybody here at the school district, I am so grateful that you helped build and teach my children to be successful. They might not have peaked in high school, but that was old. You told them, "Don't peak in high school, you don't want to do that." And now, I am a proud parent of six very successful children, and I have 13 grandchildren, most of which are in this building, and they love their teachers. They love them. So please, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I am so grateful for everything you've done for my family.
Here's Erica Johnson, you're next.
Troy Link, 327 Evergreen Drive, Somerset. I'm in my 26th year of education. This is the first time I've ever felt compelled to speak to the school board. I come here as a parent to two young adults that have graduated from Somerset. They both left here with GPAs that allowed them to pick any school they wanted with their choice. They both left Somerset to set up the handle of the rigor of college. My oldest is doing that while being a college athlete for three years and now a college coach. My youngest is a near one, is navigating college life quite well. Both feel equipped to face the challenges and the fight ahead for them. I also come here as a teacher and a coach, as a person that's had the privilege of working in Somerset now for my eighth year. In my time, I've had the privilege of working in all three buildings. Not many yet get the opportunity that I have. I know three things about this district and the staff that works here. One, they care tremendously for our children. Two, they work their tails off each day to make the best experience for the children to attend Somerset. And three, they keep coming back, day after day. Every day, we're expected to bring their best while handling students and parents that some days are at their best and some days are at their worst, and we never know which one it's going to be until we arrive. I've been doing this for quite a while. I've probably seen all over 100 different school board members. I've dealt with many upset parents navigating many situations, and I think I've handled them for the most part pretty well. I will keep going. I am concerned about our younger generation of teachers and coaches that won't be coming back. It's already a field with fewer applications. When I applied in 2000 for my first job, there was over 40 to 50 applicants for the job. Our most recent PE job, we have two. It's one of the very few professions that get publicly critiqued for your every move. You can only be told so many times you're wrong, you're mean, you're an idiot, you show favoritism, you name it, before you start to lose teachers and coaches. What is the end goal of the school board in this community? What do you want for this district? At a current rate, the district will die. We'll become a stepping stone district where people come to teach for a couple of years and then they get out. That's not a recipe for success. Getting a pay raise is good, you won't ever turn that down, but in our profession, most of us want to be told face-to-face, "Good job. Thank you for your work. Thank you for the time you put in outside your school there." They want to be told that we notice your work you're doing, that many of us wouldn't want to do. Thank you.
Travis Schachner, you're next.
First, I want to thank all the teachers and the staff and the administration. You guys do a hard job every day, and I want you to know it's very appreciated by most of the community. This evening, I'm talking about enrollment. It seems to be a recurrent theme that comes up, that enrollment is down. Well, good Lord, I wonder why? With the community Facebook posts that we see day in and day out, and the rhetoric, members of the school board pushing a narrow viewpoint championed by a vocal minority and not representing all the students and all the parents or the people of this district? You know what we can do, though? Is to increase our enrollment. We know that we can do certain things, like enhancing our school's visibility in the community. Many families are aware of our exceptional programs and support environment we offer. Social media can play a pivotal role in amplifying our presence, but right now, all everybody hears on those community pages is that divisive rhetoric, and people arguing day in and day out and being mean to each other. I'm not saying I'm perfect. I've been in those discussions too. But by writing very engaging posts featuring student successes, teacher highlights, and school activities can help create a buzz and attract new families. What we are seeing instead are posts that people are being extremely critical of our staff, and those kind of things will drive people away and choose other options. Second, we need to focus on creating specialized programs that cater to students' interests and futures' needs, and the parents as well. Offering unique educational pathways when parents see that their children have access to specialized learning tailored to their passions and future careers, they're more likely to enroll their children in our school. Also, parents have the ability for childcare. I've talked to many people in the community ever since Dr. Donnelly's presentation, and I've asked people about childcare options, and it is very slim. In Somerset, it's almost impossible to find childcare options. So some of the reason that we have enrollment problems is that I know somebody that made the choice to go to Osceola because they have childcare up there, and they created that childcare program, it became so successful that they're actually expanding it. So maybe we should think about things outside the box to increase our enrollment. If we're treating this like a business, those are the things we should do. Sometimes it takes money to get money. What it doesn't, by driving people away, is bad Yelp reviews like we're getting right now on our community pages. That's it.
Jess Munson-Donbauer, you're next.
As part of my Moms for Liberty sanctioned reeducation, I would like to apologize to my outburst at the last meeting I attended. I have recently been through their smooth braiding process of pat depending, and now I am back being a mindless drone and for the mega-conservative collective. I've been freed from things like imagination and intellectual curiosity. My reeducation focused on three simple letters, DGI, don't Google it. DGI has been proudly modeled by the stories at the last school board meeting. Critical race theory is just that, a theory. You know what else is based on a theory? Graphy. The majority of math is based on theorems, which is a fancy word for graphy, or a fancy word for theory, and a theory is just a fancy word for a guess supported by logical proof. Since we conservatives actively ignore all proof, we believe everything is guessing. So should we just stand here and let these teachers guess all over our students? I think not. Also, thanks to my successful brain smoothing, I now fear every BuzzFeed article and BuzzFeed questionnaire that exists. I refuse to let my children learn their wizarding house that they could be sorting into, much less the potential political leanings that they might have developed in my presence. What do these teachers think they're learning, or what do these students think they're learning? Civics? There should be no introspection in any social studies classes. As a matter of fact, there should be no self-discovery at any point in our education system, no matter what every coming-of-age or book has to say. The Goonies, The Outsiders, The Sandlot, The Diary of Anne Frank, Friday Night Lights, Sister of Dravenpence, these are examples of teens, these are not examples of teens learning about themselves, but instead warnings to parents and authority figures about losing control over your duties. Finally, DGI was shown brightest through our beacon when our fearless Moms for Liberty chapter brought back the classic homophobic dog whistles from the 1980s and fear-mongering around an AIDS discussion. As our bastion of masculinity Donald Trump has dictated, the only way a disease is transferred is through sex acts outside of a missionary position between a married adult man and whichever woman he is in the room with at the time. That is why masking does not work. He has declared that if a woman thinks she's enjoying intercourse, she will be blighted with super AIDS. Regardless of what my Somerset sex education taught me, our great leader Trump, along with huge conservative minds like J.D. Vance, Ben Shapiro, and Alex Jones, have told us that the female orgasm is just woke communist propaganda. Isn't that right, Steve?
All right, you're done. Thank you. Corey Lindenberg, you're up next.
Jess Munson-Donbauer, 245 14th Street. So I just want to come up here and say that five years ago, I received a phone call from Dr. Donnelly. I was teaching at Hill Murray School, which is a private Catholic school, which most people here have heard of, and she said, "I want you to come to Somerset." And I'm going to be honest, I was like, "I'm at Hill Murray, like, why would I leave?" But I left because I trusted you, and I trust you. And this is my fifth year as a social studies educator here, and I have taught in four districts, public, private, you name it. This has been an amazing place to work. From the paraprofessionals, the best I've ever seen, from my fellow social studies team, which is amazing, and I think as a social studies teacher, it's been really hard because there is this belief out there that we are trying to indoctrinate children, and that's just a lie, it's just not true. I teach my students how to think, not what to think. I love this school, I love everything about it, and it just really is hard to be a social studies teacher right now, and I just really wish that the community would trust us because we really love what we do and we care about these kids. And between Mr. Probst and Dr. Donnelly, like, I just cannot express how much I appreciate the support that you have given me. I have a daughter who had an IEP, and the elementary special education team here knocked it out of the park. She is no longer on an IEP. I'm not saying that she couldn't use additional help, but they helped her so much, and that would not have happened in another district. So I just really hope and pray that the community will trust us to do our job, and that we'll trust our leaders, our administration, our board. I just really am asking you, as a person that not only cares about my own children, but I love every one of my students, and I love this school, and I just really wish that there was more support, that we know what we're doing, and that's it. Thank you.
Corey Lindenberg, 211 254th Street, Somerset, Wisconsin. I think since you haven't called another name, that means that I'm the last one, and for like, most of the people who just spoke, I just can't express my gratitude for what you said, and I'm sorry that I'm going to kind of do a disservice by rambling here instead of speaking out of your well-prepared force. I was inspired to come speak today just from the tenor of the last month and a half worth of school board meetings. A lot of people mentioned the negativity, it's just not something that I see as a person who's been interacting with this place for the last 30 years. 30 years ago, I was introduced to Somerset by going to College River Falls and meeting some of the best friends that I ever had. They were best friends because they were great people who would do anything that you needed. So they were givers, they weren't takers. And I said to myself, as I was in college, just being an idiot in college, you know, whatever community could spit out so many of those people per capita is a community that I myself want to be a part of. So I graduated, and then two years, I taught for two years in Wausau, the job opened up here, and I couldn't wait to apply for it, and I was just elated to get the job here. And immediately, I was, and Mr. Potter mentioned that this was a diamond in a rough, it's just a diamond. I was immediately exposed to great principals, teachers, coworkers, who helped me grow as a professional and as a leader, and turned me into the person that I wanted to settle my family down. So came here as a teacher, then started moving my family in, and the elementary school, it's been said before, I just, I can't thank you enough for what you've done to my children. But not children, for my children. Oldest was full of anxiety, youngest is full of chaos, or middle's full of chaos, and youngest is still full of chaos, and she'll be here soon. But from Ms. Wen to Mr. Maine, to Ms. Nishus, Ms. Fuller, Ms. Bergerson, Mr. Hurt, Ms. Fetter, the school counselors, all of them have been there, every step of the way, with any concern that I could have, like, as a parent. So this notion that the teachers aren't responsive, this notion that the school is not responsive or able to help work the problems, it's like, I just don't see it. And the people who come here and preach it day after day after day like it's fact, I would just like to understand where that's coming from because it's not the case. And then, thank you, Ms. Don, Dr. Don, Dr. Donnelly. And then, thank you, Ms. Don, Dr. Don, Dr. Donnelly, for this ability that you have provided every step of the way in my, like, professional career. I think, you know, you were Director of People's Services or something, like, from the jump. But at each step of Dr. Donnelly's career here, she has been thrust into an unprecedented situation with chaos swirling all around, and has helped lead as a Director of Special Education, as a principal, as a district administrator, you know, just wonderful interactions with as a staff. So like I said, I, I probably, thank you very much, and municipal teachers, thank you soon. I am very happy, but I know that's all terrible, and... Thank you, everybody who spoke. All right. Next item on our agenda is superintendent report for Shannon. Go ahead.
Okay. I have a couple things. Each of you have a handout in front of you. Is the mic, I don't know. Yes, mic, Shannon. Asked if I had a mic, I was leaving YMCA. So in front of you, you have a handout. My first agenda item is just providing a little bit of clarification regarding Fund 80. You know, a few weeks ago, there was some comments made about, you know, kind of insinuating there would be some funny things happening with Fund 80, some discrepancies in the treasuries report, the annual meeting. I expected when I created this handout to have a smart board, so I will attach this to the agenda so people can see it. But wanted to just clarify a couple things. So Fund 80 is where our school age care program lives. So there have been expenditures and revenues living in Fund 80 for many, many years. What has not happened in Somerset is we have not had a Fund 80 levy. So going back to when I was doing the daycare presentations and then the annual meeting, there was some question of, "Well, your daycare presentation shows that Fund 80 is zero for Somerset, but in the treasuries report, it's showing expenditures, revenues, those kinds of things." So I wanted to clarify that there's a very big difference between a levy, which is what we currently do not have at this moment, right now, and we haven't had up until this point, versus the fact that we have had lots of expenditure and revenue in Fund 80 over the years, because we have a highly successful school age care program, and that's where all of those dollars live. I also, just to kind of wrap this up, want to encourage, if anybody has any question about these things, it's always, please come, send an email to Dave, myself, we will meet, we will walk you through. Our website has more information than most schools in the entire state. We want to provide clarity, we're not hiding anything. We're not Glenwood City, we're not Milwaukee, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. But some of these things are complex, and sometimes it takes kind of a sit-down conversation and walking through it to be able to kind of fully understand. So wanted to clarify kind of where we are at this moment in time with Fund 80. If no questions, I will move on to my other two agenda items. So I provided two memos, each for looking for some additional staff on our campus. So I'd like you to look at the memo for letter C, which is a health aide. So as you recall, when we were doing our reductions a year and a half or so plus, this was a physician that ended up being reduced. We knew when we did this that we were creating a hole, wanted to kind of, at that time, kind of see how well we could manage having one person float between middle school and high school. We managed kind of okay last year, certainly not ideal. As we moved into this school year, as I have in my memo here, Autumn, our new nurse who is here, I've been answering any questions that we might have as well, but as you see from the data, the information that I have in the memo, we are starting this school year with a little bit different landscape in terms of the health needs of students and staff. Autumn and I have had lots of conversations, and just our concern at this point in being able to safely navigate those medical conditions and concerns with just one person, we don't believe exists anymore. I've been doing this long enough where I hope you know that bringing this to you means that we have kind of went through every possible scenario. We've had lots of conversations of spending this much time in this building, or whatever that looks like, and we're at this point wanting to prioritize the safety of our students and our staff, and feel like we need to replace this position. If you remember when I talked about the third grade position, we had talked about, you know, the surplus at the end of last year that went into our fund balance, so there's some components here. You know, right now, we don't have this position, just like our third grade position in the budget, but Dave and I have had lots of conversations, we feel comfortable with this recommendation. Unlike the third grade position, this is one that we intend to keep. I think we tried to see how well we could do without it, and we've realized that with the number of students that we have, and again, with the number of health conditions sitting on our campus right now, that we need to have this third position, so we have someone trained in each building. I have lots of information on the memo. I'm not looking for action tonight. You'll take it in if you have questions. Like I said, Autumn is here, taking time out of her evening with her busy family too, so if we have questions for Autumn, she's happy to answer those. Otherwise, the plan is for the next two weeks, kind of reach out, happy to answer questions that you have, and then this would come back at the next meeting. And the last thing I have is one further recommendation, asking for one of our speech and language pathologists who's currently at a .8 FTE to increase her to a 1.0, so looking for a .2 increase. You can see in my information here, this happens from time to time with students supported by IEPs, that we have maybe a large number of students move in, needs change, we have lots of younger students that we're finding with a wide variety of needs. Speech and language covers a wide continuum, so it's not necessarily just what you might consider traditional speech and language, but there's lots of components there. With the current staffing, we can't meet all the needs of the students that we have, which puts us at some legal liability with IEPs. Again, Abby, before she left, and I, and Michelle have had lots of conversations of looking at creative ways to navigate this. I analyze dismissal rates, those kinds of things. So me bringing this to you is at the point where we can't meet the needs of our kids legally, so looking for a .2 increase, and as I have at the bottom, this would not come out of Fund 10, this can be supported through Fund 27, which is our special education flow-through fund. And then obviously, let me know if you have questions moving forward.
I have a question right now.
Yeah.
Keep it, because you're going to answer.
Oh, okay.
So we hear often about how we get federal dollars for special education services, which I believe speech and language.
Yep.
But it's not enough, and we're, we don't get enough funding from federal sources, and we don't get enough funding from state sources. So even though this should come out of Fund 27, we end up taking money from Fund 10 to cover what we, is not, by the state and federal. So even though it's coming out of Fund 27, we're just transferring money from Fund 10?
Well, so in Fund 27, we have what's called carryover, which can kind of be banked from year to year for a certain amount of time, for many years, and there's certain things you can and can't spend that on. There's certain parts of that that can't be transferred over from or to Fund 10. So that's where specifically we were looking at this particular position, is starting with the flow-through, the carryover, because every year, we've got a significant amount that has restrictions on what we can and can't spend it on, and so that's where this dollar amount is coming from.
So even though we've been required to take money from Fund 10
Yep.
To pay for special education services, we have some
Yep. And every year, we have some.
That we can use.
Yep. And I'll just make a plug quick, since we're talking about special education funding. So word on the street is that our next biennial budget is that both, both party lines are really pushing to get reimbursement for special education funding in a district at 66%. Right now, we're at about 32%. So that would change the landscape of many things that we do with our budget, so reach out to your local legislator to kind of keep pushing that. But as of right now, that's where that is coming from, but thank you. Good clarification. Thank you.
Nope. Any other questions for Shannon? All right. Next item is the ski club recommendation. Is that Troy or?
That's Troy, yeah.
Do I need you to add very good?
Probably.
So as the memo states, we're looking to make Ski Club into an official, recognized club within our district. It's existed for many years, used to be run through our community education program. That program went away. It was running kind of independently with the help of the school, but now we've kind of thought it'd be best if we run it under us. As you can see, it would be a neutral addition to our, to our school, meaning that the fees are covered with anything, put that on the students who want to do it, they know that in advance, and so really isn't anything earth-shattering here about it, it's just pretty clear-cut of it'd be under our guidance. They'll continue to help with bus, busing, and we'll provide, our goal is to provide a supervisor to help on it. Last year, we had almost 100, 128 people do it, so we needed two buses. Lori has been supervising it in the past, and we'll continue to do it, but if we want to get above 70, we would need another supervisor to join in on that. Again, our thought process is that it would be passed on to people that sign up.
Questions?
So you're saying the cost would be neutral for the focus side of the program, or?
So currently, they pay like $85 to be a part of it, and then on top of that, they pay their own ski rentals if they need it, and lift, all the things, right? So the 85 basis covers the busing. So that neutralizes whatever, if the bill ends up at the end of the year, it's covered with that fee.
Well, and? Add to the 85, I think.
That would be the thought. Literally, we're talking a couple extra dollars, maybe be a $90 fee if we end up getting a supervisor that wants it. And this is a position that would be similar to like advisor position, because they're literally about 10 to 12 weeks, and they're literally supervising a bus up and back. It's kind of an honor of their time more than anything. Unlike a coach or something like that, where it's daily practicing and things like that.
I mean, about completely, so there's 100-plus kids last year, two buses. That's the first time. Yeah, that's the first time we've had that, any, right?
Well, in the past, we've turned kids away.
Thank you. That's Troy. All right. The next item is technical corrections for the policies. Just update. I don't know, is there anything we have to go into on this? Just tying it to other policies and changing some language that?
Typically, there's no language changes. It's things like punctuation and changing Somerset's school board to the board.
Any questions from anybody? Okay. We'll move on to the next one. Meeting minutes, discussion, possible action. Danny, you had handed out some meeting minutes from other districts?
Yep. St. Grace Central, River Falls, and then another one I found. I think it's, it's not anywhere near here. But it had a lot of detail, probably too much detail. But there were some things that I liked about it. I really liked St. Grace Central's best, as far as the detail. And both, I chose River Falls and St. Grace Central for examples, because they do livestream So number 10, I liked a lot on the St. Grace Central example, the detail from the work of the school board, the core agenda items in 11. I like the detail that was. I know it's a lot, but... It's basically what we have and just flushed out a little bit more. And then River Falls, what I liked about their action items were, they listed all the incoming staff, all the staff leaving, all the staff retiring. So people didn't have to go digging into Excel sheets and trying, I mean, people don't usually know those are populated, at least the people that don't really pay attention or are new to looking at these things. I had a thought too about last year, when, just remembering how the parking fees for the high school, that got kind of ramped up on the community page, and I think people felt like that wasn't communicated very well. And it was just like, the board minutes just said, you know, principal handbook updates. So maybe that could have been a good thing that could have been included, because when people were looking for things, if they don't know it's a handbook topic or whatever, and they're looking for parking increase, it would be... But I offered to help, so I can, I used to, that offer still stands.
So you're looking at trying to add more?
Just a little more. And we can see how it goes. If everybody wants to, if people want to disagree on what I present as a little flushing out, then if it just causes friction or, you know, lots of clarification, then we can just, we can just see how it goes.
Danny?
Yeah.
One, if you and Ian, I'll see if you can work on a higher level, what you saw.
That sounds great. Yeah, I did send it. Yep. I sent all these to you, Ian, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea. Sorry, Matt, I'll send these to you. I thought you were going to be here.
Yeah, that'd be great. This last I changed, I could do that.
Yep. You bet. I'll do that right away. So business as usual for now, and you guys have been together and, you know, do you want this back on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Will you have time? Do you have time to work on that, Ian? For the next?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I'll have to email and respond after hours, but...
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, whatever. Any other comments for anybody? Okay. Thanks. The next item, the advisory committee business involvement. Steve?
All right. Well, thanks for getting this on the agenda. So we kicked this around a little bit, I think it was a couple of months ago. Business advisory committee is an advisory committee that we've made up of mostly community members. In this particular case, probably the majority of business leaders in the area. And the reason is just to tap into them, try to think outside the box a little bit as far as additional offerings that we already have, but areas that would be specific, it could be including, for example, aviation, engineering, small business, manufacturing, construction. We've got, I've talked to a few business leaders that are of interest, three that I spoke to, and there's a possible fourth. So it would be, obviously, an advisory committee for the policy would be limited in scope as far as the timeframe goes. You know, my thinking is we could propose a few meetings over, two meetings over two months, involve the four, four to five business members, a couple of board members to sit, not necessarily putting input, but... a couple of board members to sit, not necessarily put any input, but to facilitate. And then, you know, a principal or assistant principal at the high school. So that's, that's, I think, you know, thinking outside of the box and looking at different opportunities that would obviously tie into increasing enrollment, attractive from other schools in the area throughout the county. Eventually, you know, if we do have some kind of online academy that would be dedicated to Somerset, this may could be incorporated into that as well. But just trying to look outside the box, so. I guess we could take action now or we could look at doing that the next, next session. Any, any other discussion from anyone else?
Well, we have a policy about establishing citizens advisory committees. And it says that there's a lot of pieces to it that need to be board approved. For example, the board would need to approve each of the committee members. So are you prepared to list those members now? Or would you like to come back to the next meeting with more detail?
Well, I think, yeah, we need to develop the committee and the framework and agree on that and vote on that. And then obviously, the superintendent needs to be involved in working with us to select those business members that I'm speaking of. But since, you know, we talked about this a month ago, I had to check in with the leaders that have expressed some interest, so. I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve citizens advisory committee tailored to business, community business.
It's just discussion tonight. Ian?
Yep.
That's fine.
I thought the big thing, I don't disagree with it. I think he's on the right track. I think administration should be involved to discuss these ability, what's a problem. But Lori is also right, and she's very specific in the policy. What needs to be approved?
Right. As in the scope, the desired outcomes, in a limited, limited time.
And then the people, people that will be members have to be approved.
Right.
We need that information to.
Yep, I can do some checking and then I can bring those names back and discuss that further, so.
So do you have specific topics for study or well-defined areas of activities? Because it says that they shall be assigned in writing to each committee. So I would like that information before we vote on it. Can you, are you able to bring that to the next meeting, do you think? Is that enough time?
Yeah, that's enough time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you have any other comments?
Matt or Ian, anything else?
No, but that's Matt, only tell us. No, it's all here.
Alright. Thank you, next item. The next item we had was public comment. I'm just going through, kind of, that was a stat or, you know, brought up tonight. Just a lot of the public comments we've had and a lot of the way public comments have been talked about, discussed. Just wanted to have board member discussion on, you know, either do we, do we continue to have public comment at our board meetings? Do we, you know, just kind of review this to everybody on the agenda? Also, I kind of read an outline of what's supposed to be said, what items can be addressed, what shouldn't be addressed. Calling, you know, specific things out, I think we've crossed the line a few times. And the issue that ha- happens is that as soon as it's out there, it's already said. And it's, even if you stop somebody or call them out on it, the message is already out there. And so I think that's the issue I have. And I, I don't want to pull public comment from, from here, but I guess if that would be continued where we continue or people continue to come to meetings and don't adhere to the rules, I would add some, I would make a motion to suspend public comment, you know, because we can't follow the rules. I don't want to do that, I don't know if I even have board support or anything, but I would just say that listening to the comments tonight, I mean, it kind of makes sense that we've had some, that it's not a positive, it's not giving much positivity right now. I think tonight was great for the public comment, but. And so I just put on here and also just to remind people what we're supposed to say and what we're not supposed to say and to review it and to review that public comment before you bring it up, before you give a public comment at a meeting. So I don't know if anybody has anything else to add or thoughts?
Yeah, my thoughts are, it's fine the way it is. Public comment is healthy, we're, we're hearing from the taxpayers, we're hearing from teachers, we're hearing from those that have a vested interest in the community. So if we don't have public comment, we're getting into curbing free speech, which is not something we should be doing.
However, there are issues of privacy that need to be addressed and civility, respect. So rather than, and I understand what you're saying, once a name is set or a position is narrowed down, that information is already out there. But perhaps rather than getting rid of public comment altogether, if it happens, then the person who violates the standards, violates our policy, maybe we could come up with a length of time that that person was not allowed to make a public comment. Maybe the rest of the school year, maybe for a certain amount of months, maybe one year, you know, whatever the board is open to.
That's really, in my opinion, it's preposterous, because once again, you're trying to put limits on taxpayers, teachers, parents, comments that have a vested interest. We had a robust amount this evening, that's fine with me. I'm sure some of them were directed at me, but that's fine, that's what we're here for.
We need to listen.
I agree with everything Lori said. I don't want to get rid of public comments at all. I do think we really do need to go back to just not really speaking, words matter, respect civility, we can all improve on that.
Ian, you have any thoughts? Anything to add?
I think Danny has a mail in and we're worried he's, uh... There might be a creative way to handle it and that, and that, those are there, they need to be enforced. I don't hope that someone's cut off, there's a way to cut off the line. Or, yeah, I mean, there's, there are priorities that need to be addressed that are being ignored, it looks like.
Yeah, any other thoughts, Matt?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Lori, with Danny in the twenty and said. I, I don't think there's any expectation that an individual gets to come in and say whatever they want. I, I don't think that that's curbing free speech. I would fully support the public comment, you can usually be negative because it's just, it's not helping. But I am not prepared to take any action tonight. I, I think it's a problem. And I'd really like to move forward and see what happens.
So I'd like to have this come back to the next meeting and perhaps I can provide some language that we can, or I can send out ahead of time so people have time to look at it and read it and then we could discuss perhaps taking action on that at the next meeting.
Laura, should we maybe ask, yeah, what does input is on that?
Sure.
We still have a policy meeting, right?
I can email in and include you and Danny.
Okay.
But the other thing I would add is that in addition to limiting people who are violating these rules, this policy, I think it was great what you did tonight with the, it's already written on the red card, but not everybody reads it. So perhaps we need to make that statement prior to every public comment.
Okay, so it sounds like the Policy Committee is going to review this in the next Policy Committee meeting and then they'll bring it back as part of those policy updates, does that work?
Yeah, it might not be a formal meeting, it might be via email due to people being in different places.
But it would come back?
Yes.
To the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you for everybody, thank you for that one. Moving on, next topic is the Consent Agenda. Is there anybody willing to make a motion on the Consent Agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the personnel update, the athletics activities personnel update, and the donation, all as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconds, any discussion?
I'm excited about having Jesse Therson back. She was a school psychologist, psychologist in our district for many years, so this would be great.
Anything else? Alright, all of them favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, general information. On the next, the next board meeting is October twenty-first. I will have a listening session thirty minutes prior. An item I wanted to discuss that been brought up was for the board members who will be at the listening session to please sign up by, what do you want? By Thursday or Friday, so you can put it on the agenda? Or is that something, do we want to, do we want, as board, I mean, this is for, do we want to put on the agenda who's going to be at the listening session? That was something that was brought up, a few feedback from staff. They receive emails on that, if they can know who's going to be at the meeting, it would, you know, be helpful. So if we sign up, I know a lot of times Alicia's emailing the day of, like, hey, make sure you get signed up on there. So if we could, if you know you can make it or you want to make it or if we could sign up at least the Friday before or the Friday when the agenda goes out, then at least you could put on there, you know, that the listening session will have these, at least two, this person will be there at least, so people know. The people who will be at the listening session. So good with everybody? So you can look ahead of time or when that agenda comes out, just click on the listening session to review it.
We can still, you can still sign on if there's last minute, you know, attempt.
Yep, yeah, if it's not, yeah, if there's not three people already, yep. Yep, it was just, yeah, try to get, you can get a heads up to, so they know who's going to be there. Just a request from, from a few people, so try it. Okay, next item, District Celebrations. Steve, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I love the robust public comments, they're always great. Appreciate it.
Lori?
Uh, thank you and best wishes to Abby Bohata for the time she's been in our district. Parenting conferences are next week and that's always exciting, but it's also a really long day for our staff. So thank you very much for all you do for our families and our kids. Remember to buy your fifty-fifty tickets at the football game Friday night, Homecoming. The proceeds support scholarships for our graduating seniors. And please make a note on your calendar for Wednesday, October sixteenth. The Scholarship Committee is having a fundraiser at Bristol Ridge Burger Night. For each burger ordered, I think two or three dollars gets donated to the scholarship fund.
What time is that from?
From three-thirty to eight on Wednesday, October sixteenth.
Alright, yeah, just seeing Abby Bohata and Michelle Mahler, they've been here a long time and they're both moving on to other districts, so thank you again for their time. And then someone already brought it up, but the BFS in the morning before school, again, just our staff doing great things and, you know, I don't know if my kid loves going every single time I take him, but he goes. So, so thanks for offering that to everybody, or to those students. Ian?
I'll echo that. Thank you to Mr. Johnson and Don Peer for doing that, I have two participating. And thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. I just wanted to let you know that I hear you and this was very impactful. Thank you.
Matt, you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to appreciate, just like Danny said, appreciate all the staff and the, the community members that came out and showed our district in a positive light. It was, it was nice to hear that and I, I just encourage them to continue that and I encourage anyone in the community to continue to support the schools, bring things out in the office.
Ian?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Abby Bohata for her years of service to the district. She's not a lap for her friend. Yeah, and I guess just let all the teaching, all that, they are appreciated. See what they're gonna have. The staff and things that have gone the way they have. But your accomplishments are, are positive.
Thanks, Ian. Alright, then for someone to make a motion to adjourn in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute one-nine-eight-five-one-F to consider the investigation of charges against specific persons, which if discussed in public would like, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person involved in the investigation.
So move.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Alright. Roll call, Steve? Lori?
Yes.
Yes. Danny?
Yes.
Ian? Matt? Okay.